We're gonna go ahead and get started. Uh, we're a council member, we aren't, but we do have a quorum. So, Gardner City Council will come to order. Would invite everybody in attendance to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the ever-keeping and everlasting throne.
Uh, the first item of business this evening isn't on the agenda, so I apologize for that. Uh, but, uh, we're gonna take a moment and recognize some council members, one of whom unfortunately isn't here, but I have a feeling that, uh, Coach Pitch Softball, uh, Baseball, might have something to do with that this evening, so, uh, but, uh, while we are welcoming a couple of new members, uh, to the governing body this evening, we're also saying goodbye to a couple. And it reminded me, when I went and looked it up to make sure I got it right, of a quote from Henry Ford, that says, "Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success." And I was thinking about that because, you know, he joined us three years ago, uh, after a trying little time in our, the history of our governing body, and, uh, and then Tori was appointed to, uh, take over my position on the city council when I was elected mayor in 2013. And, uh, you know, along the way, uh, we won't be welcoming Todd as a new member tonight, but, but he came along as well. Uh, but the, the great thing is, is that this group always seemed to come together and work together. And I think that we've seen some success, and I'm hoping that, uh, with the new members about to be duly sworn, we're certainly going to, to see a lot more in the coming, uh, weeks, months, years to come, so. Tori, we've got a little something for you. So, if you'd come join us out here. He's got one or two. I, I keep it, but it's got his name engraved on it. But as a, a token of our appreciation, we've got a, a pen for you to keep.
Thanks.
And, and actually, we're gonna grab that name, that name for Tori, so you can take that with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay? But, uh, we, we saw appreciate yourself.
Well, thanks.
And would, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I made some notes, so I wanted to thank you.
Okay.
So, so first, I wanted to thank the Mayor Chris Morrow for appointing me for the remainder of his city council term. Second, I want to thank the current city council members, uh, for working as a cohesive team. We accomplished and started many projects that will continue to keep Gardner a prospering city. Third, oh gosh, and most important, I'd like to thank the citizens of our amazing city for allowing me to represent them the last two years on city council, four years on the Plating Commission and Boarding, Board of Voting Appeals. It was truly an honor. Lastly, I want to congratulate the newly-elected city council members. I have the utmost confidence that the newly-governing body will accomplish many great things for Gardner and its residents. So, thank you very much.
With, with that being said, gentlemen, point out, do you? That's right. They came in and we waved them down with books and paperwork and study guides.
Can I raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Lee Moore.
I, Lee Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of State Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas.
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Todd Winters.
I, Todd Winters.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas.
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Rich Melton.
I, Rich Melton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas.
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, next up, uh, we may ask all the joining men proclaiming, uh, April 24th, 2015 is Arbor Day in the City of Gardner, Kansas. And, you know, I've got this handy proclamation that I'm gonna read and then give to Jeff, but he's got better-looking hardware over there, but, well, I'll get a look at that in a second. So, whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed the Nebraska Board of Agri, to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, let a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and, whereas this holiday, holiday be called Arbor Day, was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and, whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and, whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, countless other wood products, and, whereas, trees in the city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and, whereas, wherever they are planted are a source, a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Chris Morrow, Mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2015 as Arbor Day. And Jeff, can you come up and maybe share our most recent accolade? And maybe talk a little bit off about our upcoming Arbor Day cleanup? And, you know, you, you read all this and you think, well, maybe being a tree hugger isn't such a bad thing, so.
No, certainly, that's a good thing. Uh, well, I'm proud to announce that the City of Gardner has been awarded its 12th Tree City USA award, that's 12 years in a row. Uh, there's a number of requirements that we have to meet, uh, to be eligible for that, uh, when we apply for that recognition, and we successfully have done that. Um, we're already on our way to, uh, try to reach number 13 in a row. Uh, part of that is by the Mayor leaving the proclamation, Andrew Redd, uh, yet this evening. Uh, one of the other things that we, uh, we're not only required to do, but certainly do enjoy doing, and that is, uh, having a program to the community to educate, uh, a little bit about trees. Uh, we actually celebrate Earth Day and Arbor Day at the same time, and that's this weekend at Windwood Park in the Gardner Greenway. So, we'd like to certainly invite any and all of you to come out, uh, if you have a couple of hours to join us. We're gonna do a little bit of a, a united effort cleanup of our greenway system, uh, for a little while, and then we'll celebrate with a free picnic, uh, which will have your Parks and Recreation staff cooking for you that day. And, uh, then we'll do a tree planting demonstration and just make a, a good day of it. So, should be a lot of fun, and, uh, hopefully the weather will cooperate. I am not responsible for the weather. I'd like to throw that disclaimer out there, uh, right away, but, uh, it's a great program. We're expecting anywhere, uh, weather holds out between 100, 150 folks from the community to join together to, uh, to celebrate Earth Day and Arbor Day.
And Moore, always welcome, and it's great family fun, just make sure that whoever comes along with you doesn't mind possibly getting a little bit.
Certainly, yeah.
All right. Bob, I've got this for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jeff.
And we'll put this on the display.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to make comments about city matters or matters on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make public comments? Ask that you approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and be heard.
Good evening. My name is Adam Boytzen. My address is 17441 South Agnes. It's my first time addressing the city council. Um, congratulations to the new council members. Um, I come before you, uh, with a bit of a problem. I have been, um, homeowner in Gardner for three years as of April 5th. Really enjoyed living in the city. It's afforded me a place to live, it's quiet, um, it's clean, nice trees. Um, but there is a bit of a problem that I've noticed, and, um, in order to get to my house, I have to drive down 175th Street, and, uh, where 56 beers off, you have to drive straight. I'm not married and I don't have children, so I'll let you know, my point of view right off the bat. There are children that walk on the side of the road, and there's literally about four inches of space on either side. Some people like to jog. I probably should jog more, but I don't, that's not me. I'm really not walking on the side of the road, but I am driving. It's 35 miles an hour down that road. I'm not asking for you to change the speed limits. I'm just asking for you to possibly consider someday putting a sidewalk in there, or at minimum, if it's too much a cost for the sidewalk, to possibly, um, put a little bit more of a shoulder down there. Um, I've thought about coming here many times, but last week I saw a kid was walking, carrying a violin case, uh, about got hit. And I think it's becoming dangerous, and as people are speeding, which they're also called, Bob's, I've called people speeding down that road, um, I just think it's an accident waiting to happen, and I would really hate for any kid to get hit on the side of the road by negligence, or by someone who's doing the speed limit and just can't get out of the way. So, I hope you consider that, uh, possibly looking at some solutions or alternatives, uh, for that area. So, thank you for your time.
Adam, I'm sorry, what, what area did you say?
Uh, 175th Street, where it's, uh, beers off.
Oh.
From 56. That's where the sidewalk stops, and there's really nothing out there but a big field. The only option is for the kids to cut across, uh, in the dirt in that field there, so. Okay? All right.
Adam, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else coming forward?
Good evening. I'm Tom Fox, really, a little bit 503 East Willow in Fargo. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Congratulations to the new members. Um, first, I'm never addressing the council, but my issue is at the area of Cedar Niles and 175th, uh, by Walmart and the, uh, West Isles at that intersection. I don't know if it's a city issue or if it's actually a state, uh, but I think there's an opportunity to add, uh, for the ingress and egress, uh, coming out of there, going to the north, where another turn lane could be added, which would alleviate some of the traffic congestion coming out of a Walmart. Um, the stakes is there, it strikes off, just, and all it would take would be another head unit, and then adding to the timing on the intersection, uh, but I think that would give the opportunity for as much traffic as we have coming in out of Walmart, uh, in order to help that, and, uh, possibly alleviate, uh, potential for some accidents and those kind of things. Uh, and again, I don't know if that's an issue that is for the city, or if that's gonna be the state based on the, the highway there, uh, but, uh, with a little bit of background and traffic safety, uh, I, I believe that that's something that would, uh, help us. Thanks, man.
Well, thank you, Tom.
My address is 321 West Skylark. When I came here, not I had no intention of coming up here, and I've already talked to some of the council about what I want to propose, but I'd like you to consider putting some handicap parking out front, because for me, to walk all the way from back here up the ramp, being on oxygen, and my oxygen levels drop up real fast, that's a real hike. I understand the ramp for wheelchairs, but for me, and probably for others, three steps is a lot easier than a ramp. See, I'm already out of breath, just walking up here. So, I'd like you to consider that. Wouldn't take much to put a couple right out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Anyone else coming forward? No one else coming forward, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
No move.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Schute, that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda passed. New business item number one, consider selecting a president and vice president of the council. Uh, the governing body rules of procedure, chapter two, section E and F, dictate that a president and vice president shall be appointed from members of the city council by a majority vote at its first regular council meeting in April following a regular municipal election. The council president presides at meetings when the mayor is temporarily absent due to travel, illness, et cetera. If both the mayor and the council president are temporarily absent, the council vice president presides. Council member Christina Harrison has most recently held the position of council president since, uh, April of 2011, and council member Schute, Steve Schute, uh, has held the position of council vice president, I believe, since October of last year. And with that being all there is of presentation, that's, we can open the floor for public comments regarding new business item number one. With no one coming forward, a discussion or a motion regarding, uh, the appointment of a council member as council president?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we nominate Steve Schute.
Second.
Motion Moore, second Harrison, that we appoint council member Steve Schute as council president. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Congratulations. I would consider a motion about appointing a council member as council vice president.
I'd like to make a motion nominating Todd Winters for vice president.
Second.
Motion Melton, second Moore, that we appoint council member Todd Winters as council vice president. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Council Vice President Winters. And then all the ceremonies over. And back to the business at hand. New business item number two, agenda item is to, uh, deny application for a massage establishment license for massage zones at 611 East Main Street. Uh, Brian Faust, good evening.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mrs. Zou, prior of massage zones, to be located at 611 East Main Street, has applied for a massage establishment license to provide massage therapy services. Chapter 515 of the Gardner Municipal Code requires annual licensing issued by the governing body for massage therapy establishments. The applicant previously held a valid license in the City of Olesa and the City of Lenexa, but has not been previously licensed in Gardner. The Gardner Police Department did complete a background check on the applicant, and no record was found. After review of the application and information received from the City of Lenexa, staff recommends denial of the application for massage establishment license for massage zone at 611 East Main Street, based on section 515040A4 of the Gardner Municipal Code. Per that section, after the filing of an application in the proper form, the governing body shall examine the application, and after such examination, so issue a permit for a massage establishment, modeling studio, or body painting studio unless the governing body finds that. Item number four, the applicant has knowingly made any false, misleading, or fraudulent statement of fact in the permit application or in any document required by the city. The basis for this denial was that Mrs. Zou was a licensed massage therapist in Lenexa, and that she worked as such at the U Relax Massage Establishment based on reports obtained from the City of Lenexa. Mrs. Zou did not disclose this information in either section three or section four of her application. It does appear that Mrs. Zou made false, misleading, or fraudulent statements of fact in an attempt to mislead the city away from the prior license with Lenexa, and employment with U Relax in Lenexa due to problems and revocation associated with that establishment. Our city attorney did notify Mrs. Zou by letter dated April 7th, 2015, of the council meeting this evening, and staff's recommendation for denial. Included with your packet are a copy of that letter, a letter, um, the City of Lenexa's hearing opinion, and the application for the massage establishment. Uh, staff would recommend that the governing body deny the application for a massage establishment license for massage zone at 611 East Main Street for calendar year 2015.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, we'll open the, uh, floor for public comments regarding new business item number two. If there's anyone that would like to speak regarding new business item number two, please approach your podium, state your name and address, and be heard. With no one coming forward, questions for Brian regarding this new business item?
Uh, the applicant's not here this evening, correct, Brian?
Uh, I didn't see her in the audience, no. She was invited to the meeting.
Okay. And, uh, reading the letter, uh, that, uh, came from the City of Lenexa and the, uh, the legal actions therewith, um, although this individual was not directly related, uh, was directly related by family to the individual who had the, whose actions caused the revocation of the license, um, she was not directly involved, and that's why she came up clean on the background check, correct?
Uh, we.
Well, she, the, the basis for the revocation in Lenexa, um, they revoked the owner's license. There, there's conflicting evidence as to whether or not she was the owner. At one point in time, she says she was, um, then, but the finding of the Lenexa body was just that her husband was the owner.
Sure.
Yeah, but, but, uh, her husband was not charged criminally, so nothing would have, uh, hit on a criminal background check.
So, really, this came out more for the fact that she didn't want anybody to know about what happened in Lenexa, so she didn't mention it in the application. That's annoying misstatement of fact.
That, that's what we believe.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
What, what do you base that belief on?
Um, well, if you look at the application, um, she, it specifically requests that, um, that they list, and paragraph three lists all businesses, occupation, or employment for the three years immediately preceding. She didn't identify, um, her employment at the U Relax in Lenexa. Um, also, paragraph four says, "Have you ever previously been issued a license or permit to operate a massage establishment or practice as a massage therapist? If so, where and when?" And she did not identify Lenexa, and we know she had a license in Lenexa, and she was, uh, licensed, uh, to be a massage therapist at the U Relax in Lenexa, and she did not identify it there either.
When did, when did we send the letter? When was it?
Uh, April 7th.
So, she's had time to reply.
And I, I received no response.
Nor have I.
Any questions? If not, I'd, uh, the, the suggested motion is to deny the application. I would entertain a motion.
Sumo. Second.
Motion Winters, second Moore, that we deny the application for a massage establishment license for massage zone at 611 East Main Street for calendar year 2015. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion Harrison. New business item number three, authorize the city administrator to sign an agreement with H.W. Lochner Incorporated to perform design services for Gardner Municipal Airport. Brian?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Tim, our city engineer, will come up and, uh, brief the council.
Very good. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor. Please. The, um, there we go. The aerial on your screen in front of you is, uh, obviously a, um, shot of Gardner Municipal Airport. Uh, it shows that the south end of the airport, uh, it's labeled acquired property, is the Sizemore Track that, uh, was purchased last year. Uh, the intent of that purchase is for future lengthening of, uh, existing runways at the airport. So, uh, the city currently owns that property, but, uh, there is a, um, a home on the property and a couple of outbuildings, uh, that need to be demolished. So, we have a draft agreement with H.W. Lochner, who is the, uh, airport's design firm, uh, to provide specifications, design details for demolition of this property. The-
license for Massage Zone at 611 East Main Street for calendar year 2015. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. New business item number three, authorize the city administrator to sign an agreement with H.W. Lochner Incorporated to perform design services for Gardner Municipal Airport. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, our city engineer, will come up and read the comments.
Very good. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor. The, there we go. The aerial on your screen in front of you is obviously a shot of Gardner Municipal Airport. It shows that the south end of the airport, it's labeled acquired property, is the Sizemore tract that was purchased last year. The intent of that purchase is for future lengthening of existing runways at the airport. So, the city currently owns that property, but there is a, a home on the property and a couple of outbuildings that need to be demolished. So we have a draft agreement with H.W. Lochner, who is the airport's design firm, to provide specifications, design details for demolition of this property. The total amount not to exceed is $32,000. Twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty of this is eligible for a, an FAA grant in 2015. The remainder, twenty-six fifty, will be eligible next year for an FAA grant. And the FAA grant supplies 90% of the cost of the project. The remaining 10% is provided by the airport. So, the, I should mention here, too, that the city attorney has reviewed it, the contract, and has a couple of issues that we still need to address. So I would ask that you authorize the city administrator to sign this, but still being subject through you and reconciliation of those two issues.
Okay. Very good. Public comments regarding new business item number three.
Good evening. Debbie Hickman, 848 South Sumet. Is this, I didn't hear that the Gardner Airport Board recommended or is working, are they working along with this project? Is that how this is coming together?
Yes.
As a citizen, I'd, I'd really like to be able to watch on video the airport commission meetings that they have. I guess I'm negligent and I've never attended one, nor have I, have I asked much about it, but I'd kind of like to see that we have all of our commissions and our boards operating under the same procedure. So I'd like to see that brought to where, if I don't come to a meeting, I can kind of keep up with, with what's going on with things at the airport. Thank you.
No one else coming forward? Questions for Tim or Brian regarding new business item number three?
I'm, I was wondering if your, if the plan is to take down the fence that's currently the, that marks the property line for runway 35?
Yes.
So is that going to be replaced? Are you going to have to build a new fence along the, the southern edge of the property line again?
Not right now. There'll be future work.
Okay, so that's not part of the, right?
Do you foresee any further need to go, I guess, further into that acquired property and take any more of those properties that are?
The, the airport has a five-year plan, which includes the, the two adjacent properties. One, I think, is scheduled for next year, and the other one, two years from now.
Are those homeowners on board, or they, is that imminent domain?
Those negotiations haven't begun yet.
Okay. But they're aware of the?
I believe so, yes.
And will this, will this extend the runway, or is it, is it just intended for runway protection?
Well, the plan is for the, the north-south runways currently grassed, it will become paved.
Oh, it will become paved.
Other questions regarding new business item number three? No, I would entertain a motion.
Submove.
Second.
Motion shoot, second Harrison, that we authorize the city administrator to sign an agreement with H.W. Lochner Incorporated to perform design services for Gardner Municipal Airport, not to exceed $32,000.
Contingent upon?
Contingent upon final approval of the contract by the city attorney. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Tim. New business item number four. Economic Development Incentive Policy. Does anyone want to introduce?
I would like to introduce. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. This policy represents two years of collaboration with the business community, with Economic Development Advisory Council, as well as results from our comprehensive plan that was developed with citizen input. You recall, we adopted a comprehensive plan, which is our vision, in September. We adopted the economic strategy plan, and the incentive strategy is a portion of the recommendations that was included in the strategy plan. We had three meetings with the Economic Development Task Force, the symposium where we heard from key development leaders, and a workshop with the governing body on March 16th. Tonight, we have Herb Hardwick, who is here to present a, the city's proposed economic development incentive strategy plan. Mr. Hardwick.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and new members of the council, and guests, citizens of Gardner. My name is Herb Hardwick. Pleasure to be here this evening to continue our work on the city's economic development plan. Just wanted to give you a little background information on our firm. We founded the firm nearly 25 years ago. Firm was established here in Kansas City, Missouri. Our practice areas or states that we practice in include Missouri, Kansas, Illinois, Indiana, Connecticut, New York, Texas, Louisiana. We have a focus on public finance, real estate development, economic development incentives, including transportation and corporate law. We are a very experienced law firm when it comes to transactions, real estate transactions and development, and finance. We have been ranked as one of the top 25 bond counsel firms in the Midwest by The Bond Buyer. We're very happy with our reputation and we're glad to be here reporting this evening. I just wanted to outline for you our client list, just so you would have some idea of some of the entities that we represent. We represent the city of Kansas City, Missouri, as the Industrial Revenue Bond Counsel, the Tax Increment Financing Commission of Kansas City, Missouri. We've represented them since 2005. We represent the Port Authority of Kansas City, Missouri, city of St. Louis, Missouri, state of Missouri, city of Newton, Kansas, city of Chicago, and others. Thank you. As I mentioned, some of our experience includes serving as counsel to the Port Authority of Kansas City, Missouri. One of our engagements includes representing the port in connection with the Berkeley River Front Park, which is a mixed-use housing project and real estate development project. Firm currently represents the authority on several projects, including real estate development financing transactions throughout Kansas City. We've also represented the city of Newton, Kansas, in connection with the Kansas Logistics Park, a project that many of you are familiar with. In addition to that, we represent the city of Kansas, Missouri, on Sprint Arena and its entertainment district. Suffice it to say, we have significant experience in this area. We're here this evening to continue our discussion with respect to the city of Gardner's economic development incentive policy. As Ms. Harrison Lee pointed out, the city is considering the adoption of the economic development incentive policy. Policy is the result of two years' worth of work in which we engage citizens, business, and community leaders of Gardner, of the Gardner community. Process including an assessment of the city's economic development readiness program, concluded in part that Gardner was perceived as unfriendly to business development, that developers experienced poor customer service and cumbersome procedural delays. The city established a blue-ribbon economic development advisory task force to assist in developing the vision for the city's economic development initiatives. The task force, members of the community, and stakeholders participated in the process which led to the city's adoption of a new comprehensive plan and economic development strategy. The comprehensive plan outlines the city's land use plan for residential areas, parks, and open areas, while the city's economic development strategy identifies seven goals which support long-term development for the city. The goals are to continue to develop and maintain a quality community with character, to create a community that people don't want to leave, to build an image and identity as a business-friendly community, to recreate downtown as a destination, to utilize existing assets, to be development-ready, and to diversify the economic base. The new comprehensive plan and economic development strategy represents the city's blueprint for economic development for the next 20 years. Our firm met with the city's task force on February 25th, and we discussed this policy in depth. We presented case studies which highlighted the applications of different incentives and the effect of those incentives on specific development projects in surrounding cities. The task force provided comments regarding the use of incentives and how the application could benefit the city. The task force made the following recommendations, which were submitted to the council for consideration. The city needs to provide a full range of incentives or a toolkit of incentives for developers and centers for development projects. Incentives should be available for current business owners and small business owners. The city's website should communicate its interest in new development and how to do business with the city. The city should be responsive and provide accurate information to the development community. These recommendations were subsequently presented to the city council for consideration. In addition to task force recommendation, the city sponsored an economic development symposium which Ms. Harrison Lee referenced. On March 16th, we met with the city council to discuss economic development incentives and to provide feedback from the February meeting with the Economic Development Advisory Task Force. We discussed the city's use of incentives vis-à-vis surrounding communities and how the city had not yet adopted the full complement of incentives used for economic development like its competitors. Following the discussion, the council expressed its support for the creation of a policy which would include a full range of incentives which would facilitate new development and assist existing small business owners. The proposed economic development incentive policy has been prepared and submitted to the council for consideration. The new policy sets forth 13 economic development incentives. The incentives are a blend of incentives previously adopted by the council, coupled with new incentives which represent additional tools to facilitate development in the city of Gardner. The incentives are as follows. Property tax abatement, tax increment financing, sales tax revenue bonds or store bonds, community improvement districts, transportation development districts, special benefit districts, neighborhood revitalization areas, the Kansas Downtown Redevelopment Act, the Heritage Trust Fund, the community development block grants for small business, high-performance incentive programs, the Kansas Capital Multiplier Loan Fund, and the Kansas Capital Multiplier Venture Fund. This is a blend of incentives that were previously adopted by the city, as well as other incentives that we thought would be helpful to the city of Gardner, as well as to identify and adopt or propose the adoption of certain incentives that are currently sponsored and supported by the state of Kansas. The city of Gardner will use, will strategically and responsibly consider employing one or more incentives for development projects which meet its economic development goals and desired objectives by the city council. In accordance with those areas of focus, the city of Gardner offers the following menu of development incentives, each of which may be utilized individually or layered together or in conjunction with state, regional, or federal incentives, if and to the extent such layering is consistent with the city's economic development policy. The city encourages development and the utilization of incentives outlined below. In accordance with its economic development initiatives, the city considers the approval and utilization of incentives within the parameters as set forth in the following matrix. I thought that this was one of the things that the council really wants to focus upon were the policy parameters, so I thought I would try to hurry up and get to that point because I think that's something that you may have been thinking about and considering for a long time. Excuse me. With respect to tax abatement, we are proposing that with respect to new projects, that there should be a minimum amount of $750,000, and with respect to existing projects, $350,000 amount. We also proposing a change of the base from 50% up to 60%, which allows for that abatement to be given up to a period of 10 years. Now, what typically happens, the benchmark is 50% for abatement. You've probably seen that in surrounding communities. What our rationale was for encouraging or proposing 60% is that we thought that given that Gardner is proposing a new menu, a positioning, if you will, of new incentives, that 60% would have more appeal. The other thing that we should mention, that typically when abatement is given in other community, is for a specified time, like 10 years. In our case, the city of Gardner has the ability to shorten that. You can go three years, four years, five years. So if you are contemplating a shorter term, then perhaps, from a developer's standpoint, the higher level of abatement on the front end may be more attractive or will keep them incented, if you will. So that's kind of the thinking. I didn't know if you had comments or questions. Feel free to comment as we, as we go through the project.
Real quick, we can do it for four years at 60% and then break it down to the last six years or whatever at 50% or less?
You have the flexibility to do that. Yes, councilman. With respect to store bonds, I'm sorry, I skipped one. TIP. TIP typically, with respect to the increment, I thought this was kind of neat. Typically, when you do a TIP project and you have a new increment, all of the increment, or 100% of the increment, is typically sent back, afforded back, or channeled back into the project for redevelopment. In the case under Kansas law, you don't have to give a developer 100% of the increment. We're proposing 25%. And we're proposing 25% because 25% is a starting point or a baseline figure. If, depending on the particular project, the more bells and whistles that a project may bring, you may increase the amount of the increment for that particular project. So if we start off with a lower amount, then it gives us flexibility, depending on the project, to go up to 100% if you're bringing in the ABC plant manufacturing to do business in the city of Gardner. So that was kind of the thinking there. Your community improvement district. There, we're starting with $2 million and $1 million for existing projects, and the thought there is that typically, community improvement districts are used for large-scale infrastructure projects. We didn't think that going with a lower amount was going to be very feasible, when you think about the type of projects that we would use a city for. The transportation development district, we didn't have a base for, and the reason there is because we wanted to be flexible, number one, but number two, it's not uncommon to use a TDD with another incentive. So you could put that on top of a TIP project, if you will, or other types of incentives to sweeten the transaction from the developer's standpoint. And so we want to give you broad flexibility from that standpoint. With respect to the special development district, again, $2 million and $1 million there. Given that bonds are typically issued for a special benefit district, we wanted to kind of weigh the cost of issuance versus the cost of putting together, putting in place a special benefit district. So by the time you, you pay a bond lawyer, underwriters' counsel, your financial advisor, the trustee, it becomes a little expensive. So we're thinking that the city may not want to utilize a special benefit district for a smaller-scale project. Neighborhood Revitalization Act, looking at 95% of the abatement on any new improvements. You kind of have flexibility there. Same with the Kansas Development Redevelopment Act. That's by statute. First year, 100%. Year two, I think, is 80%. It has a declining, step-down schedule over a period of five, five years.
On that, on that act, isn't there, isn't there a minimum, like, you have to have some kind of downtown that's already in disarray or, what is that number? How do we know if we meet the criteria for that redevelopment act at all right now?
Well, this has to be approved by Secretary of Commerce.
Okay.
So it has to be approved, you have to make an application-
I see.
-to have a district established.
Okay.
With respect to your Heritage Trust Fund, in effect, that's, you're dealing with historic properties there. You're entitled to project expenses up to- You're entitled to project expenses up to ninety thousand dollars. There must be a match there. In addition to that, you're also entitled to federal tax credits up to twenty percent, and state tax credits up to twenty-five percent. CDBG, that's a kind of a new wrinkle for small businesses. We like it because it allows a small business owner to pursue loans, to qualify for technical assistance, and to even secure financing that can be used with the acquisition of land or the construction of a building. Here, Kansas Multiplier Loan Effect Fund, I'm sorry, and the Kansas Capital Multiplier Venture Fund are geared toward small businesses. In effect, to the extent that you have private capital invested, you can either secure a loan or private equity capital to match up and to secure funding for those particular incentives. I didn't know if anyone had any questions or comments at this time on the array of incentives. When you started this process, you had, in effect, four incentives that you had utilized. Utilized abatement, you utilized TIF, you used the Neighborhood Revitalization Act, and I think the Kansas Downtown Redevelopment Act. And we have kind of expanded it with emphasis on small businesses and also with the thought of giving you flexibility with respect to being able to offer various incentives to developers, depending on the magnitude and scope of the project. I want to just talk briefly about economic development policies. In the full policy, there are about twelve different bullet points. I'm only going to talk about four, which I think are the most essential. The economic development general policy set forth a framework and guidelines by which projects will be evaluated. Some of the key provisions are as follows. The City of Gardner will consider the judicious use of incentives for projects which demonstrate a substantial, measurable public benefit. Such a public benefit will be evidenced by one or more of the following. Clear economic benefit to the city. The project shall be of a nature that has been identified by the City of Gardner as a desirable to stimulate the local economy and improve the quality of life for citizens of Gardner. To maintain the existing tax base, strengthen and diversify the economic base of the city, and thoughtfully implement the city's comprehensive plan and economic development strategy. Point two, all incentives will be subject to a but-for test. To comply with the criteria of a but-for test, the governing body must find that without the incentive, the proposed project will not occur, would only occur on a significantly smaller scale, would not be financially feasible or stable, or would not result in an appropriate internal rate of return for the developer, thus deter desirable economic development opportunities consistent with the city's strategic vision and goals. Point three, a project which meets one or more of the but-for test criteria will be eligible for incentives only to the extent necessary to make the project financially feasible. If the city determines that an economic development project could produce a substantial benefit to the city, the city may determine that there is an overriding public benefit to grant the incentive, even if the project does not otherwise achieve the but-for criteria. Want to give you flexibility there. Point four, each project receiving an incentive must be consistent with and further the elements of the city's comprehensive plan and shall comply with all applicable city building codes. Each project must also comply with applicable zoning requirements, unless an amendment to such requirements is approved through the appropriate city process. Questions on those kind of threshold points from a policy standpoint? In your books, I'm sure you may have had a chance to review, they're more extensive, but I think they kind of set the stage for the thinking for your economic development incentive policy. Those coupled with incentives kind of represent the framework and the proposed policies that we're submitting to you at this time. We're open for questions, answers, questions, comments, thoughts, critiques?
Yeah. After, after presentation, we'll, the floor for public comments. So, I wouldn't wander away far, but if there's anyone in attendance that would like to make public comment regarding new business item number four, feel free to step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and be heard.
Debbie Hickman, eight forty-eight South Sumac, here in Gardner. I guess every time I hear that there's citizen involvement, and it's mentioned in terms of CPAC, the Comprehensive Plan, I kind of have some concerns when I hear that. I was a member of the CPAC committee. I attended every single meeting there was. I even attended meetings for the business-based people. The only meeting I did not attend was the Gardner Faith-Based Leaders Meeting. At no time, unless I slept through a meeting, was there ever any direct discussion on economic development. These were, there were exercises in these meetings that were guided by the consultants and with basically a listing of a general idea. Never did we ever get into anything that was in any kind of detail related to the economic development. In fact, the biggest discussion we had was about fifteen minutes. It was actually the day they were asking us to approve the CPAC, the Comprehensive Plan, and we'd expressed concerns that the southeast quadrant hadn't even really been properly addressed in that plan. So, I guess I take a little bit of issue with the fact saying that citizens were involved through CPAC in the issue of economic development. Again, we have a policy that came out to the citizens late afternoon on Thursday. Citizens have not had an opportunity to have direct input or discussion with our mayor and with our council on those issues. Are we ever going to get to a point to where we feel that the citizens deserve to know this, be able to discuss it in a meeting that is documented, in a meeting where we have everybody together? I just don't understand how many times I can come up here and ask, please involve the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, lady.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to continue to serve. Adam Cox, two eighty-five East Skylark Street. Just to echo what Debbie said, you know, I, some of my questions were answered earlier about where the numbers came from on the sixty percent, the seven-fifty K, three-fifty K existing. That's not statutory, that's just thrown out there.
It's a recommendation.
Recommendation, right? You know, one of the things we keep talking about is supporting businesses and everything. I wonder if the three-fifty K for existing businesses is a little high? I mean, you know, everything's expensive, you know, but we have a lot of small businesses. Is there any value and maybe some flexibility there with some lower numbers? The other thing that occurs to me is I'm a bit confused by this but-for test about can developers fund the project but for this incentive? I mean, I'm not sure you're going to get access to a business's books to be able to confirm whether they could afford to actually build something without a tax incentive. How you're going to realistically, honestly assess, you know, compliance? Who would come in here and say, I need tax financing, without saying, oh, I can't do it unless you give me, you know, deferment on taxes for X number of years? Of course, it's business. The more money I can get, the more money I can make, right? So, the, this whole section with this but-for test seems a bit like a PR thing and the policy that's not really actionable when it comes to real businesses and how they're going to be able to fund things, unless I just don't understand and there's so much behind-the-scenes financial detail being submitted that, that I don't comprehend. So, you know, and then I just wanted to mention that, you know, again, with submitting this stuff earlier, you know, once we get in the habit of submitting it, say, two weeks ahead, what would be the problem? Give us two weeks so we could ask questions and, you know, ask for a session so we could go in detail and get some of these questions and bounce around these ideas about numbers, you know, instead of Friday or Thursday night, and then we're ready to vote on Monday. So, thank you.
Thank you, Adam.